Good evening, everyone. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant Arms, has the front lobby been cleared?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. We request that all electronic devices be turned off or put in silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography, except during the special presentation portion of the meeting. I'm pleased to welcome you to the February 6, 2024 School Board Action Meeting. The time is 6:00 PM and this meeting is called to order. Prior to this evening's meeting, we have been enjoying music performed by the students from Gateway High School Chorus Program. This select group of music students is under the direction of Jenny Rhimes, who was recently recognized as a Golden Apple Teacher finalist. Please give this elite group another round of applause. And now I welcome them to play one more song. Thank you, students. We'll now take a brief pause to clear the performance area. Thank you. Achieves his or her highest potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Moving on to item number two, approval of the agenda. This evening's agenda includes moment of silence, presentations of colors and pledge of allegiance, acknowledgements, recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include one item under Board Office, one item under Academic Services, four items under Business Services, two items under Human Resources, two items under Operations, and four items under Good of the Order. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda tonight?
I move to adopt tonight's agenda.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion moved by Ms. Langford Fleming, seconded by Ms. Jordan. Please record your vote. Motion carries 7-0. As is the custom of the board, Board Member Patrika will lead us in a moment of silence, after which Board Member Langford Fleming will lead us in the presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Please bow your heads in a moment of silent prayer or reflection.
Thank you, Mrs. Langford Fleming.
Good evening. Introducing the cadet who is presenting the national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight is First Sergeant Anthony Garrus, Army Instructor from Gateway High School. First Sergeant Garrus served 29 years in the Army in numerous assignments and retired as First Sergeant of the Army Reserve Training Center at Fort Knox. This is First Sergeant Garrus's 10th year as a JROTC instructor and his fourth year in Lee County.
Thank you very much. Presenting the national colors tonight is Cadet Colonel Maria Carver Hall, the Deputy Brigade Commander of the Gateway High School JROTC Program. Cadet Carver Hall is in her fourth year of JROTC in Lee County. While in JROTC, she has been active in all aspects of the program. She has been the captain of drill, marksmanship, and drone teams. She has also participated in JROTC leadership and academic bowl teams and raiders. Cadet Carver Hall volunteers for many JROTC events to include football parking, toy and food drives, and school open houses. Cadet Carver Hall is an excellent student. She currently has a 4.24 grade point average. Cadet Carver Hall has joined the Florida Army National Guard. This summer, she will leave for basic training and advanced individual training to be a combat medic. Upon completion of her training, she plans to enroll in Army ROTC at the University of Central Florida. Please join me in the reciting of the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening's student representative is Robert Chia. Robert is a junior attending Mariner High School. Robert is a part of the AP Capstone Program and engages in a diversity of extracurriculars. He has been elected president-elect of his school's HOSA chapter, vice president of French Club, and participates in many other activities. He is a junior varsity wrestler and a sergeant in the Cape Coral Police Department's Explorer Program. Following high school, Robert hopes to pursue a career in civil service. Let's welcome Robert. Great to have you, sir. Next up on the agenda are the acknowledgements for the month of February. Robert, if you'd please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Fisher, and good evening. The character word for February is honesty. To start, a quote by James Altucher, "Honesty is the fastest way to prevent a mistake from turning into a failure." The design you see displayed on screen was created by NIE DiTappia, an 11th grade student at North Fort Myers High School. There are two recognitions this evening. First is the recognition of the 2023-2024 High Reliability Level 1 Certified Teachers. And next is the 2023-2024 Level 1 Certification Marzano High Reliability Schools Recognition. Board members, please join me in the pit for recognitions.
I would like to invite Mrs. Lynn Harrell, Executive Director of Leadership and Professional Development, to please join me at the lectern. Good evening, Ms. Harrell. The School District of Lee County is proud to recognize four teachers for achieving High Reliability Teacher Level 1 Certification. These teachers join a cohort of 331 certified teachers across the United States. High Reliability Teacher Level 1 Certification means that educators understand and implement a model of instruction, engage in deliberate practice related to growth goals, and monitor the impact of instruction on student achievement. To achieve certification, teachers must submit a variety of tasks that are scored by expert educators. The school board and the superintendent are honored to recognize the following teachers for achieving High Reliability Teacher Level 1 Certification. First up, Anastasia Graflund, Learning and Leadership Teacher in the Professional Development Department. Next up, Laura Jordan, Peer Collaborative Teacher, Calusa Elementary School. Next up is Katie Markey, Learning and Leadership Teacher in the Professional Development Department. And Mindy Stoddard, Learning and Leadership Teacher in the Professional Development Department. The School District of Lee County is proud to announce the formal recognition of schools who recently achieved Level 1 Certification as Marzano High Reliability Schools. Level 1 Certification means that each school has created a safe, supportive, and collaborative culture. These 21 schools join a cohort of 11 previously certified Level 1 Schools in Lee County and just 672 Level 1 Certified Schools across the United States. To achieve Level 1 Certification, teachers and administrators from each school participated in training, collected feedback from parents, students, and faculty staff members, and implemented action plans to address school culture. Certification artifacts were reviewed by an outside expert to achieve certification. The school board and superintendent are honored to recognize the following schools as Level 1 Certified. We're going to recognize these schools in four groups. So I'm going to call out all the names in Group 1, and then we'll clap and take a picture, and then we'll go to Group 2, until we're all through Group 4, because there's a ton of achievement here. So Group 1, Allen Park Elementary, Principal Melissa Booth; Colonial Elementary, Principal Eric Washington; Fort Myers Beach Elementary, Principal Dr. Tracy Kohler; Franklin Park Elementary, Principal Dr. Mia German; Gateway Elementary, Principal Sherri Gibson; Harns Marsh Elementary, Principal Cynthia Hernandez. Moving on to Group 2, we have Lehigh Elementary, Principal Jackson Morgan; Mirror Lakes Elementary Principal Amy Boback; Patriot Elementary, Principal Elizabeth Feliciano; Pelican Elementary, Principal Clint Garlic; Spring Creek Elementary, Principal Gillian Flora (Fiora, my bad), and Tortuga Elementary, Principal Jennifer Shona. Just so you all know, we have two groups left. Moving on to Benita Middle Center for the Arts, Principal Melissa Lehner; Mariner Middle, Principal Dr. Mason Clark; Three Oaks Middle, Principal Forrest Walker Jr.; Trafalgar Middle, Principal Leanne Kane; The Alva School, Principal Dr. Nathan Shaker. So before I move on to the last group, I'm going to read my last paragraph, which is, "We congratulate these schools for earning certification. A safe, supportive, and collaborative environment is foundational for student achievement." Congratulations. And last but certainly not least, we have Group 4, East Lee County High, Principal Tony Allen; Lehigh Senior High, Principal Daria Groat; North Fort Myers High, Principal Debbie Diggs; Buckingham Exceptional Center, Principal Dr. Vicki Gohegan-Mosley. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations. Great job, everyone. I don't know if we give a moment for anyone that wants to clear out of here before we begin the rest of the meeting. Congratulations.
The school board is viewpoint-neutral during public comment. We ask that decorum be kept, respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language such as cursing, insults, derogatory language levied against an individual or a class of people are prohibited. Further personal attacks, such as name-calling, are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing, or display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the chair or the parliamentarian. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1 and may be removed from the chambers by the sergeant-at-arms. Per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are twenty, two minutes if there are thirty speakers, and one minute if there are thirty-one speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, sixty speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chairman, there are fifty-one speakers that wish to address the board this evening. The time per speaker is one minute per speaker.
Thank you, Attorney DePree Bruno. Please ensure you have completed a public comment card to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with staff in the hallway. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but has not filled out a public comment card? Okay. Seeing none. Oh, sorry. Please make sure. Sorry about that. Okay. Okay. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. We truly appreciate it. It's vital that citizens such as yourselves participate in the process of open government. It's one of the bedrock principles of our nation. To facilitate this process, I want to reiterate, this is a business meeting. Just as our board attorney said, make sure that we conduct ourselves civility, no name-calling, no disparaging people or groups, and that we abide by the time allotted. We truly value your input. Thank you again, everyone. Attorney DePree Bruno, please proceed with public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the following individuals please line up? Maddie Stewart, Ian Rankin, Robert Daniels, Pam Schmidt, Lilian Petry.
Good evening. One Bennett, great. I just want to tell you all that there were a hundred Purple Group people outside demonstrating on behalf of our public schools today. As you know, we are nonpartisan advocates for public education, teachers, all students, parents in our district. So thank you very much for your work, and there are many who wanted to speak, but I think sixty minutes is probably enough. Thank you so much to everybody from the Purple Group who came and demonstrated their support for our schools today. Thank you.
Robert Daniels, as you know, I've been teaching with the district for over ten years. That means I've been on annual contract, but unlike all the other teachers on annual contract, my job has never been defined in any way, shape, or form by my contract, being a virtual school teacher. This means me and my forty peers come to work every day without our job being defined with any sorts of protections or limitations, as is found in the contract for the normal brick-and-mortar teachers, if you will. This wasn't an issue until 2020. As we went through the throes of dealing with COVID, the virtual school went from four-hundred students to over sixteen thousand. Because there were no limitations in our contracts, teachers whose full-time job would consist of a hundred and fifty students, some were assigned over three hundred. I asked during our bargaining session this time that that be addressed and the virtual school teachers' working conditions be written into the contract.
Good evening. My name is Lilian Petry, and I have two kids in the school. I came here to say that when it comes to the quote, "Hate has no home here," I completely agree with that. The problem is that it only addresses some specific groups that are on the flag, and I think that it should, that the gender flag should not be up in the school system. As for the pride flag, it's absolutely not something that should be in the school system. Academics should be limited to instructional material only, and the teaching of politics, religion, morality, sexuality, and the right, is only the rights of the parents.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Will the following individuals please line up? Stephen Blumrosen, Betty Ann Sherman, Joe Phillips, Ryan Monroe, Stephanie House.
Good evening. My name is Ian Rankin. I'm here to object to the displays of specific signs in the classroom in violation of state law. My comments are relative to those signs. What is the obsession that this movement has with youth? We've even heard of preschool cases of this indoctrination. I think it's cowardice to ply your trade on these youth in the classroom out of the reach of their parents. Have you ever asked a parent if it was okay that you teach this to their children? Have you ever taken this ideology and teaching into the adult realm? Let's say classes to industry, the business world, union halls, et cetera? I think not. You only-
Thank you. Your time is up, sir.
Good evening. My name is Betty Ann Sherman. I am a retired reading specialist. I am not one to look back and glorify the good old days, which in hindsight most often seem better than they actually were. However, fresh in my mind are the treasured days a mere few years ago when I shared my beloved book collection as a welcome volunteer reader in my grandchildren's classrooms. Students gathered around full of enthusiasm, intelligent questions, and creative interpretations of literature. Fast forward to today, my books require media specialist approval, a lengthy process, especially with fifty thousand books now still waiting review. Teachers are uneasy about the possibility of offending a student, which could result in a reprimand or worse for them. Perhaps a political party might find one of my stories touching on kindness, an ethical or moral issue not in adherence with state-approved curriculum, and come after me. Should we no longer be surprised by how swiftly our freedoms are eroding? I am beginning to lament the sacred rights of the good old days and hope with all my heart that you, our elected school board, do so as well.
My name is Pam Schmidt. My son went through the Lee County School System, graduated 2005, captain of the soccer team. My, his father is gay. I'm gay. Our son is straight. Tolerance does not teach people to be, it does not indoctrinate people. It simply teaches them tolerance and acceptance, and I think that that's a good thing to have in the school system. Thank you.
If anyone has any audio, could you please lower it? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Blumrosen from Benita Springs. I saw the Chair of the REC on Week News, and he talked about some unnamed student who indicated they thought DeSantis had taken care of this, whatever that is, this was, and they were offended. We all know that it is okay to feel offended, and it is often best to express in a civilized manner, which your schools teach supposedly, according to law, how we feel. We should express how we feel. If it is true that students in high school think that DeSantis took care of it, then this is a teachable moment. We were talking about curricula earlier today, and there's a lot of government that students are supposed to be learning. If they think DeSantis can just take care of something by himself, and there's no independent judiciary, there's no bicameral legislature, et cetera, you've got a lot of work to do. I'll leave it at that.
My name is Smokin' Joe. The very protest that happened outside is proof of the false accusations Sam Fisher made to Cape Cod REC that parents are not expressing concern. I would like to leave you with one final thought. One would believe, but not most of y'all, have endorsed Armor Person's son-in-law, who has been cited for dumping hazardous waste in his sterile waterway. Unlike the Love Canal in Niagara Falls, we don't have an Aaron Brockovich, and Mulcahy only seems to have a $2,000 fine. Do you still believe these establishment cronies have your best interests as for the purple poison people who stand on the basis of moral decay?
No.
Never say, not today.
Sir.
We're not going to use derogatory terms against a group of people.
Hey, please remove him.
Thank you.
Please remove him. We're going to take immediate-
First warning.
We're going to resume this meeting, everyone. As I said, we understand, we appreciate your feedback, we appreciate your input, we appreciate the passion, but we're setting an example for the kids in our community. So I'm going to reiterate, no name-calling, no disparaging, okay? Let's resume public comment. Thank you, everyone.
Hello. I'm Ryan Monroe. I'm here today because I'm in opposition to different people's opinions about sex being taught to children, and I'm here to advocate for this school board, which is supposed to be a Republican board now, to do their job, make sure the CRT and the rainbow flag get out of our school. We only need one flag, the American flag. We don't need all these other flags, different allegiances. I believe that these, that this board, this poster that came out, this is about three years this has been going on in this district, and it just bubbled up now. So I believe the teacher involved should be punished and lose his job for trying to indoctrinate our children. And I believe that this board has the power to do that. No matter what it costs you in lawsuits, you should protect the children. Children come first.
Well, the following individuals please line up. Marge Cox, Maria de Jesus Martinez, Dr. Thomas Donahue, Deborah Georgidis, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name, and Christine Garrus.
Good evening, council members. My name is Stephanie House. I'm a retired Army Sergeant, disabled veteran. I joined the Army because I believe in the United States of America. I believe in the rights of freedoms, all freedoms. I believe in freedom of choice. I don't agree with everybody's freedoms and everybody's rights, but I agree to disagree. I don't have the right to choose what you believe in, and you don't have the right to choose what I believe in. You live your life the way you want to live it, and I'll live my life the way I choose to believe. Don't tread on me, and I won't tread on you. If I choose to have my children to read certain books, they'll do that. Teachers should teach what they believe that should be taught in school. Don't tell one person what their child should do and not do. That's what you hire a teacher to do, to teach. If you don't want your child to be taught, then do that for your child, not my child, not for all children. One child, one person, should not do that for all-
Your time is up. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Marge Cox. I'm a retired library media specialist. I live in Benita Springs. And as we're thinking about all the things to celebrate, and I think we have lots to celebrate in Lee County schools, just a reminder that February is Black History Month. And as we look at books that are banned, oftentimes the ones who are written or illustrated or feature black characters are ones that are considered inappropriate. I think it's very appropriate to have all different cultures and races represented in our schools so that kids see themselves and also see others that are not like themselves. That's how we learn more about others, that's how we gain empathy to others. And so as we celebrate lots of things in Lee County School, let us celebrate Black History Month and the books created by black authors and illustrators. Thank you.
My name is Maria Martinez, and I am here with American Revival Church. I basically-
I basically have a question for the people in favor of the pride flag in classrooms. If I were a Christian teacher, do I get to bring my Jesus flag to the classroom and hang it on the wall? Show it to your children, have them see it and pay respect to. Should I get the right to bring my Bible and teach your children that God created a man and a woman, and that He states clearly that homosexuality is a sin? I think we all know the answer to that. So the bottom line is that teaching students anything else outside of math, reading, science, history, et cetera, and encouraging them to embrace homosexuality is wrong. We don't need that in the classroom. It violates parental rights, it's contrary to state law, and it's against the Word of God. The Bible clearly says that God created a man and a woman, and homosexuality is a sin. Leviticus 18.
Your time is up. Thank you.
No clapping, please.
No clapping.
Hello. My name is Dr. Thomas Donahue. I'm a former teacher, counselor, principal, and superintendent. I live in Fort Myers. The school board's required to listen to all parents, even the crazies, but it's not appropriate for the school board to enable a vociferous group.
Sir, no disparaging, please.
Pardon me?
I want to give you a warning. No disparaging groups, please.
Okay. It's not appropriate for the school board to enable a vociferous group of parents to obstruct the education of other parents' children. Your stated mission is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential. A child cannot achieve his or her potential if you discriminate against classmates that are not exactly like them, or ban certain ideas from the classroom. Conformity kills creativity and critical thinking. Your stated vision is that you are to be a world-class school system. World-class school systems don't ban books or allow propaganda.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Well, the following individuals please line up. Heather Rodriguez Wibbles, Lieutenant John K. Thomas, Ariel Martinez, Carrie Tetero,
My name is Deborah Georgidis. I'm out here with the Purple Group, so I think, I'm sure that you're aware of the issues and which side the colors are on. The Purple Group have come out tonight, leaving the warmth and comfort of our homes, to support the Lee County School District. We have faith in the district's mission, policies, and procedures. We want to make it clear that the opinion of the whole county is not expressed by a noisy minority, a minority who will oppose anyone who prefers an open book, an open
My name is Christine Garrus with American Revival Church. I'm also an Army veteran. I condemn all forms of hate and speak truth in love. However, the hate has no home. Here, a flag hanging in Riverdale High School classroom or any other school in Florida violates Florida's Individual Freedom Act, known as the Stop Wrongs to Our Kids and Employees Act, also referred to as Stop Woke Act, that was signed into law on April 22, 2022, and remains enforceable in our public school system. Academics should be limited to instructional material only. Teaching anything other than STEM curriculum violates state law and parental rights. Why does the law continue to be violated? All flags and paraphernalia promoting Black Lives Matter, transgender, and LGBTQ plus issues must be taken down immediately in accordance with the Stop Woke Act. The Teachers Association say they are concerned with rights, but parents' rights are more important because children belong to their parents. Stop the indoctrination of our children. Stay out of parenting.
Your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
Hi. My name's Heather Rodriguez Wibbles. I'm a school counselor at Colusa Middle School. Happy National School Counselors Week. We do a lot in your school system. To look at our job description, you would not understand the pure amount of work and heart that we put in. We are on mental health teams, we assess students for suicidality, we are looking at all records, we, this is a short list, and I'm running out of seconds. So what I ask you is bargaining starts next week. I hope you're looking at your budget and you're allocating money appropriately for us. When you see what we do, come to my school, come see. I want you to see a mental health team meeting, see what we do for our students. Oh, I have an extra couple of seconds. So, look at that. We support education for students. Every school that has school counselors in it sees higher graduation rates, higher,
Hello. My name is Pastor Ariel from American Revival Church, and I'm here to speak today regarding the flag, obviously that's hanging in that classroom. And first and foremost, some of you on this panel, actually, I remember when I had an organization sat in front of me and answered many questions regarding things like this. And ironically, today I see you all sitting here, and obviously you're not doing a very good job, or I wouldn't be standing here. It's ironic to me that we start this session praying, or an invocation, better said, and we pledge the American flag, but yet we have a flag that stands for the exact opposite flying in the classroom, and you all are sitting here doing absolutely nothing about it and taking it lightly. We have a flag that represents a Marxist group, Black Lives Matter. We have a flag that condones homosexuality, which is an open abomination. We have a flag that confuses children. That is not, sir, derogatory comment. That is the truth. And if you don't like it, you can give me the last warning.
Mr. Newlin.
Please remove him.
Warrant exactly my being here.
We're going to recess.
Power. And if you resist again, power. Power. Warrant you. Stand by.
We are going to resume public comment. As I said, we want to hear from you all. But again, no disparaging people, no name-calling. We want to get through this, so, okay? That's what I'm asking. As I said, we set an example. No.
Mr. Newlin, she's out of order.
We are going to, we're going to keep going to recess if this happens. So set an example for our children, please. Okay. Sir, proceed.
I'm Lieutenant Colonel John Thomas. Good evening. I served 22 years in Collier County as a high school math tutor. I assume that the board is fully aware the state of Florida has recently passed a law that prohibits the teaching of certain specific topics that are under considered discussion this evening. Apparently, the specifics of that law have either been not understood, or that the board may be inadvertently permitting their violation by their inaction. The message we are advocating is simply that the LCSB support and ensure compliance of the law throughout the entire Lee County school system. Thank you for the time and your attention.
Well, the following individuals please line up. Kristy Divageli, Lam R. Jones, Kyle Jacobowicz, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, Sam Stewart, Barbara Day.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Tetero, School Counselor, Department Head at Norfolk Myers High School, high school level lead, and President of the Lee County School Counselor Association. I'm here tonight to advocate for my fellow school counselors. Most likely, you all see through the lens of a school board member focusing on district-wide concerns. My goal is to help you see what is going on in our schools through the lens of a school counselor. Different perspectives can create larger visions. My hope is that we can align our visions, which will lead to innovative, comprehensive change. In districts where the vision of the school counselors, administrators, superintendent, and board members align, academic excellence occurs. A starting point to aligning our vision would be to require administration to abide by the directives sent out from district leadership, stating school counselors should not be tasked with duties such as holding doors, assisting with car duty, lunch duty, proctoring assessments, just to name a few. We have currently, we have 21 openings for school counselors, and I know of two more who are leaving. They are frustrated and burnt out.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Hello. My name is Liz Matt. I'm from Benita Springs. As was stated at the very beginning of this meeting, Dr. Fisher, or Mr. Fisher, the mission is to help all students achieve their individual highest potential. We have 97,000 students that you educate from K to 12. You know that number better than I. It just stands to reason that in such a huge population, there's going to be all kinds of individuals, all kinds of family backgrounds. Tolerance is how we get through the day with that many kinds of personalities in our midst. And so I stand in support of the banner that supports tolerance, and I encourage you to see how that supports your mission of helping all children achieve their individual highest potential. And I thank you. And thanks again for recognizing the wonderful teachers earlier tonight.
Good evening. My name is Lane Jones, and I live in Cape Coral. And I would like to be thankful for our nonpartisan school board. And I'd like to point out what a nonpartisan school board is, because we may no longer have nonpartisan school boards shortly. But a nonpartisan school board is not beholden to an externally imposed political template, and they are not beholden to a deparketed party donor. So what would the motivation be to insert ideology into what should be a collaborative, student-centered board? There is no purpose other than to turn previously non-aligned officials into political operatives. And persons produced by such a system would no longer have the incentive to serve Lee County. Instead, their allegiance would be to a national political machine, and they would serve their political masters by placing ideology above education and party loyalty above personal integrity. And I thank you so much for remaining.
Your time is up.
And Sam Stewart, thank you for the students and the faculty. That shows us what it's all about here. I've been a school superintendent, as you know, for a very long time. I was also a district superintendent who evaluated and supervised districts. So I'm very aware of how districts are supposed to run, and for the rational ways of solving, and professional way, of resolving complaints. And so when I heard that someone called for a rally and attacked a teacher as a way of resolving a complaint, I said, wait a second. This is alarming. Attacking teachers... Attacking teachers in this way threatens all teachers, and it creates chaos and fear. And that's not going to help us with the attendance rate, or the achievement rate, or attract teachers to the schools."
Thank you. Your time is up, sir.
I'm Dr. Barbara Day, and I spent 35 years in education as a special ed teacher, director, and assistant superintendent of schools. In addition, I spent four years as a substitute in Lee County. I'd like to adventure... To say that I probably have been in more classrooms with more different students and more teachers than the vast majority of all of you. And I think it's critical that all of us keep in mind what our job really is, and that's to protect students and staff and make them feel accepted. As school board members, that is paramount for you all and for your job. And I encourage you to take all steps to protect all students, whether they be white, evangelical, wealthy children, or poor black kids, or gay, or trans. That I think it's our job to protect all of them so that they feel welcome in your system. Thank you.
No comment, or we're gonna go to another recess.
Kristi Divagili. So, the school district has an affirmative duty to notify parents of every student affected by the flag at Riverdale High School, and given the opportunity to secure the Hope Scholarship for their child. That way, parents that are concerned can take immediate action to protect their students, and the district can rest easy knowing they've done everything they can to protect kids. This affirmative duty is clear from the Hope Scholarship statute, the State Board of Education rules, and the FDOE guidance. The Hope Scholarship is the best way to keep students from being intimidated, harassed, or threatened, and it is the perfect way for parents to exercise their parental rights. And just a friendly reminder to any principals out there that are considering refusing to offer Hope to students, this is a violation of Florida law and will leave you open for possible reporting and potential disciplinary actions. So, please just do the right thing and give kids hope. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Anthony Millian, Sarah Wilson, Symphony Perotti, Jack Cambotti, Deborah Nesselhoff.
My name's Kyle Jacobowetz. I have here the only book that's banned in Lee County schools. It's the Bible. And it's the most important book, because it changed my life. Without it, and the Holy Spirit, I would be an alcoholic and abusive husband still. I think that the school has a lot of depressed, anxious, confused kids, and that kind of ideology that the flag promotes does not help them. And that's about it. I forgot else I was gonna say. Thank you very much. God bless you. Anthony Millian, Fort Myers resident, father of four. I've heard a lot of feelings. I've heard a lot of opinion. It's not what we're here to discuss. We're discuss... Here to discuss the law. And you, Sir Christopher, need to stop being a coward and enforce the law. And I quote, "HB 7, HB 1557, and HB 1467 should be enforced by all of this board." This has nothing to do with opinions on books, or your religion, or anything else. Enforce the law.
My name is Sarah Wilson, and I'm here with the Lee County NAACP as the Political Action Chair. He's right, there is a law in place. However, that law speaks on instructional material, which this flag is not. This flag is a symbol of inclusivity to make all students feel like they are in a safe place in our Lee County schools. And most importantly, whether you take that flag down or not, there will still be LGBTQ students and teachers. There will still be trans students. There will still be black students within the classroom. Speaking of that, to close out, I do find it to be problematic that the Black Lives Matter portion of that flag is covered. That, once that is covered, the students that are in that class that are black students, how does that make them feel? This law does reference that. Making children feel a certain way about their race, making them feel bad about their race. That flag was put up, they saw what it said, and now it's being covered. Black Lives Matter is not just an organization, it's a statement.
Time is up. Thank you.
I'm Cindy Perotti, a 36-year veteran biology teacher and a resident of Fort Myers. I am sad that the children in Lee County attend schools that are practically devoid of books in their media centers and classrooms to read for pleasure. In their... No, excuse me. Because unrelated people think they have the right to ban these books rather than leaving it to their parents. As an avid reader from the age of four, my parents allowed me to read any book I desired. It opened up a world for me of fantasy, science, history, and more. Books are a window to the world. Malala Yousafzai, the youngest person to be awarded the Nobel Peace Prize after having been shot in the head for going to school because she was a girl, said, "One child, one teacher..."
Your time is up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jack Lombardi. I am a former resident of Illinois. I am now a Lee County parent. I'm gonna tell you how this plays out. I've seen it before. I've seen what happened. First, the shoe-in is the rainbow flag and all the feelings that support it. And I would agree and stand by any child who was bullied simply being gay. I will stand next to them. However, this is how it started. And then, it became images like I'm holding up, and I'll share with you if you want them, that are in Illinois schools, because they were guilted in. And all these great people here that are advocating for children don't realize what they're part of. They don't realize how this goes. I've seen it. I've had my life threatened. I've had pictures of my house taken. They said they were gonna execute me. They said they were gonna take a hatchet to me, all because I stood up for my children's innocence. Thank you. Please do your job.
Will the following individuals please line up? Christopher Poyah, Nancy Terrey, Suzanne Zeimer, Margie Gonzalez, Tracy Bein.
My name is Deb Nesselhoff. I've been before you a couple times about a couple of different issues, and I appreciate the time, extra time tonight, that you have given to us to speak. I was an educator for over 35 years, teacher and principal. I also worked in a hospital for children who had long-term illnesses, and I had to work with children of all cultures and backgrounds, some speaking other languages. I always try to look at the other person's perspective when I see a disagreement. I just can't wrap my head around the perspective on the other side tonight. The banner in question doesn't teach children to be gay. It doesn't teach children to be bisexual. It is trying to show, I think, inclusiveness, and it provides a safe...
Time is up. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for your service. My name is Suzanne Zeimer. I'm here for the... From the Social Justice Committee of the Unitarian Universal Church. And I'm a retired teacher of over 40 years, and we never had banned books when I was teaching. And the children were fine and happy. And this is what we need to do, is to give them a chance to make their own minds up. And by doing that, we have a free classroom with all kinds of ideas. And let the teachers teach. Let them teach truth matters. All truth matters. And that's what I have to say, that banned books, we're in the Nazis in World War II. We're better than that. We'd better not go back there. I was a child of World War II. My uncles were there and gone.
Thank you. Your time is up, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Christopher Poyah, and I'm standing here not only as a concerned citizen, but as a candidate for Florida State Senate District 33. With the word of month being honesty...
Sir?
I'm gonna be as honest as...
Pause. We're not gonna talk about politics and guard any candidacy, please. Please proceed, okay?
I'm gonna be as honest as I can without being tossed... I didn't hear that rule earlier. I'm sorry. I am a bit deaf. I gotta stress again to get the volume turned up in here for most of the people. I can barely hear a thing every time I'm in here. To the Bible question that was posed earlier, eating shellfish and wearing mixed fabrics is also sins of the Bible. Their claims would be more credible if they weren't cherry-picking. Also, it's paramount to the founding of this country that church and state are separate. The flag that's being complained about literally says, "Hate has no home here," and that should be a message that is welcoming to school boards. I call on the Board to protect our teachers, our students, and make sure every student feels warm and welcome in here. Thank you very much.
I'm so happy that I ended up here tonight when... To see these principals and teachers being awarded. And that's why we are here. The Purple Group is to support our teachers, our principals, and our students. Basically, we felt they were being under attack. That's why we're here tonight in big numbers. And I think, as you heard from Maddie Stewart, there were over 100 out of us outside. We're concerned that our teachers, when they are trying to stand up to hate, they're promoting that idea that that's considered something wrong. That's a crime. I share my concern that in Florida, culture wars have become more important than education. And by allowing children to grow in their... As they should, and feel safe in the schools, I'm afraid that our teachers now live in fear, and that's not the environment we want in our schools.
Thank you. Your time is up. Your time is up.
My name is Tracy Bein. I heard about the protest against the teacher and the counter-protest. I showed up, not a part of a group, though the Purple folks have welcomed me. I come here because I was that kid in high school who was figuring out that she was gay. And I implore you all to remind... To remember that you need to create a safe environment for your students. That poster was not trying to indoctrinate children to be any of those. It was trying to tell those kids that are different that they had a safe place to go in that school. And I think, as you want all of your students to reach their optimal level, then you need to be willing to stand by your teachers that are there to help those students feel safe and comfortable. That is the best learning environment, and that, I think, is your true job. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Marge Gonzalez. I just want to tell you that my great-grandfather Manuel Gonzalez was the very first settler of Fort Myers, and his wife, my great-grandmother, Evelina Weatherford Gonzalez, was the first teacher in Fort Myers. She taught a brood of kids, and then the other settlers' kids that came. I'm here to say that hate is bad and love is good. As educators, we have always stayed on the side of those who are bullied. And we cannot support an agenda that asks the majority to close their hearts to the marginalized for being who they are, just for being who they are. Hate is bad. So, I applaud the school for having a banner that says, "Hate has no home here." Consider the irony that there's a House bill right now that's... House Bill Number 359, which is going to protect the monuments...
Thank you. Your time is up, ma'am.
Will the following individuals please line up? Janori Alvarez, Miles Love, Karen Edison, Monica Shintani, Dr. Paula Porter. Mr. Alvarez, you can just go to the microphone.
Hello. My name is Janori Alvarez. I was born and raised in Lee County, and I was a substitute teacher for one year. I have two beautiful half-sisters, and one of which has rolled in Riverdale High. Unfortunately, or ultimately, I'm here simply because I want them to be able to focus on their higher education. I want them to focus on making friends and volunteering. I don't want them to focus on the politics that are going on in the building here. I don't want them to always worry about what person or group is going to try and attack them here either. And I don't want them to worry about their words or violence. I want them to read, and I want them to read every single thing that they can get their hands on, just as many of the other bright men and women throughout history has had the opportunity to as well.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to all these good points people are making. This is what America is about. America is the home of the free and the brave, and our public schools are an extension of that freedom. Freedom to be who you are, freedom to speak about who you are, freedom to listen and learn from one another. We're here, listening to one another, and this is exactly what a classroom should be. No limits on curiosity, because students who are not allowed to be curious are not allowed to learn. Students who are in class with fear, teachers who are in class with fear of what might come up, will limit learning. And we want a world-class education. We must teach about what the world contains. Thank you for listening.
Ma'am, name for the record, please.
Oh, Karen. Edison, from Fort Myers. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Monica Shintani, and I'm a full-time resident of Cape Coral. And my message is simple. If you are against an anti-hate flag, you are pro-hate. And the flag in the classroom in question is about inclusion, not exclusion. Our woman... All women on this board and in this room know that, what that means. And I should never forget that the struggles our brothers, our grandmothers, and every woman before them suffering, suffer through the years of oppression and exclusion. Again, this flag, this banner, is about inclusion. So, keep the flag in the classroom. Hate has no place in our classrooms.
Mike Love, NAACP. When I went to school, the symbol of inclusion on the walls were dead white presidents and white principals. We rallied around colors, and we rallied around flags. Now, little black boys and girls, brown boys and girls, and little white girls aspire to be president because of a black man. We should be afraid of the 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, and 7 o'clock busing of our children. My question to you is, when will Dunbar and Tice have a middle school so you can stop busing our kids at 6 o'clock and 7 o'clock in the morning? Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Ray Klassen, Gary Robbins, Kathy Horn, Michael Levin, Ann Kylie.
Good evening. Dr. Paula Porter, Lehi Akers. Teaching...
Teaching is not indoctrination. Teaching is not grooming. Teaching is guiding learners to acquire new knowledge and skills, to impart information, ideas, and develop critical thinking skills. These words are harmful distractions from what teaching is about and what's really going on in the classroom. What is not acknowledged is that indoctrination usually occurs in a home setting, embed- and embedded in the child by the age of six, according to educational psychologist Piaget. This is well-documented research that we use in education. As a professor of education, I have yet to find any valid, reliable, credible research that clearly indicates teachers are indoctrinating or grooming students in the classroom.
My name is Ray Klassen. I'm a former teacher and I have five grandchildren in our school system. Of the vile lies percolating in our society, the most pernicious, in my view, is the one that describes teachers as indoctrinators, even groomers. Hate has no home here. Maybe it should read hate should have no home here. Beneath the words are five hearts, symbolizing love, three of which clearly reference groups in our society at which considerable hate has been directed. I put it to you that a great number, probably more than we could ever think, of our students and staff strongly identify with at least one of those three hearts. Quite a slap in the face to them if the flag is removed. The middle heart, a depiction of the American flag, stands above the others, representing the idea that we are all Americans, whatever our-
Your time is up, sir, thank you.
Good evening, whoops. Good evening, my name is Ann Kylie. I live here in Fort Myers. I am a mother, and a grandmother. I am here to support all the teachers, and in particular, the teacher that is presenting the banner, that's under contention. I agree with the definition of indoctrination is not the same thing as education and learning. There are- there are children that are born with ambiguous genitals and ambiguous hormonal balance, probably about one in 5,000 births, okay? So to indoctrinate some-
Your time is up, thank you.
Good evening, Michael Leva, Lee County. I've heard a lot of words thrown around lately, and I'm hearing them repeated here again. Honesty, duty, responsibility, intolerance, stop hate, hate has no home. Those are all redundant. Those are all a given. We are responsible adults, obviously we love one another. But minus out of all of that is truth. Case in point, you should all know that we would have offered, the group that is, that to avoid today, they would appease us by removing the Black Lives Matter symbol from the flag, as long as the rest would stay up. What does that say to you? This is all false. This isn't truth, this isn't honesty, this isn't a sport that we all show up wearing our colors. The only color I want to see is red, white, and blue. This is America. Stop putting each other in boxes. This is about our posterity and future. It is not some pastime for after we retire.
Your time is up, sir, thank you.
All the following individuals, please line up. Tara Jenner, Reverend Greg Cranston, Leslie Jander, Donna Lusk, Jay Jennings.
Kathy Horn Astero. The administration thought it fair tonight to allow 20 people from the Purple Group and 20 people from the other group to have cards to speak tonight. But what you might not know if you weren't up front is that while there were over 100 people-
One second ma'am. No from the audience. Uh-uh, that's it. Nothing, uh, stop, stop, stop. We're gonna go to a recess again. Nothing from the crowd. Got it? Okay. Okay, please remove.
Mr. Chairman. Listen, folks, we really want to be able to move forward and finish the public comment. As the chairman indicated, we want to hear everything that everyone has to say.
Stop, okay, we're going, we're taking a recess.
If you are confused or anxious about your sexuality or your gender, the truth, the way, and the light. Our Father who art in heaven, alled be thy name. Our kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Tara Jenner. I hear the news all the time, and all of our politicians and all of our newscasters regularly say and bemoan the fact that we're losing our democracy. And I would go a little bit further and say, we're actually getting a democracy. What we're losing is our constitutional republic. A constitutional republic protects the liberties of the minority over the will of the majority, whereas a democracy is mob rule. So those that decry and tout and brag that they had more people, well, let's look at that. The majority over the rights of the minority. You had as a word honesty. Honesty is there's not a single person in this room that I would say wants hate in our schools. Not a single person believes that. But if you want to say that the top part of that flag must by definition agree with what is on the bottom of that flag, that is dishonesty right there. I ask right now that you guys-
Thank you, your-
Good evening, I'm Reverend Craig Cranston. I'm the senior pastor of St. John the Apostle MCC here in Fort Myers. And wow, lots to say, but let me start with, I'm an academically trained theologian, and here's what I'm gonna tell you. I will radically disagree with the biblical exegetics of some of the folks-
Okay, everyone, we're going to resume this meeting and we're going to resume public comment. Again, as I said, it's our -- please, please quiet down. As I said, please, please quiet down. Let's all, as I said, we want to hear you, as I said, but it's important, whether you agree with someone or disagree, let's show respect here, okay? Please continue with public comment. Thank you.
Kathy Horn, Astero. The administration tonight thought it fair that people in the purple group and people in the other group each had 20 cards to stand up and speak tonight. However, you should know that there were over 100 people in the purple group standing outside and fewer than 25 in the other group. This tells me you have the strong support of the majority of Lee County in providing a broad-based, fact-based, open-minded curriculum that supports all your students. I'd like to ask you to turn that into action, make it a legislative priority for you in Tallahassee, to fight against the nonsensical, puritanical, and politically-driven agenda that is attacking our schools these days. And try to get -- you've done a great job, I think, in working within the law. It's time to change some of the laws. I support the person with the flag in their, in their school, and I think that if somebody's got a problem with hate has no place in our school, I think they're saying, well, then hate does have a place in our school, and it shouldn't. It's not very Christian. Thank you.
Ma'am, I just want to confirm, did we get your name before?
Uh huh.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
My name is Gary Robbins, a member of the Unitarian Universal Congregation Fort Myers, where our first principle is the acknowledgement of the inherent worth and dignity of every individual. John Philip Newell gave us a presentation one time on the sacred light that we are born with, that everybody carries within them. And after the presentation was over, he asked a Mohawk Indian elder to comment on the presentation, and the Mohawk elder got up and said, "I wonder," with tears in his eyes, he said, "I wonder where I'd be tonight, and I wonder where my people would be tonight, and I wonder where the Western world would be tonight, if the people who came to this land centuries ago had come looking for the light in us." Perspective is everything. And thank you for recognizing the light.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Leslie Jander, North Fort Myers. If you are confused or anxious about your sexuality or your gender, the truth, the way, and the light. Our Father who art in heaven, alled be thy name. Our kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen.
Tara Jenner. I hear the news all the time, and all of our politicians and all of our newscasters regularly say and bemoan the fact that we're losing our democracy. And I would go a little bit further and say, we're actually getting a democracy. What we're losing is our constitutional republic. A constitutional republic protects the liberties of the minority over the will of the majority, whereas a democracy is mob rule. So those that decry and tout and brag that they had more people, well, let's look at that. The majority over the rights of the minority. You had as a word honesty. Honesty is there's not a single person in this room that I would say wants hate in our schools. Not a single person believes that. But if you want to say that the top part of that flag must by definition agree with what is on the bottom of that flag, that is dishonesty right there. I ask right now that you guys--
Thank you. Your--
Good evening. I'm Reverend Craig Cranston. I'm the senior pastor of St. John the Apostle MCC here in Fort Myers. And while lots to say, but let me start with, I'm an academically-trained theologian, and here's what I'm going to tell you. I will radically disagree with the biblical exegetics of some of the folks that have spoken tonight. And I will also disagree with the recitation of the Lord's Prayer and the manner in which it was given, because the truth is, that is a prayer rooted in the Hebrew text, and it's one of liberation, not of restriction. Hate has no place in schools. Twenty-five thousand schoolchildren commit suicide every year in this country. So while you may be required by the law to do a particular thing, like remove that flag, here's what I would implore this war to do. How do you creatively respond to students who need your support? Because an LGBTQ student is not engaged in sin. They are engaged in what it means to be a beautifully-created child of God.
Well, the following individuals, please line up. Kathy Michaels, Michael Desaya, Joyce Campana, Rachel Brown.
Good evening. My name's Donald Lusk. I go by Donna, because after 50 years of trying to be someone I was not, I finally was able to become the person that I should be. When I was born, there was a choice whether I be male or female, and my parents chose male. And I've been fighting with that for the rest of my life. In school, I was, I was born here in Florida and raised in the South, because my father was in the service. I also served in the service during the Vietnam era in the United States Navy. I just want to let you know that there is no room for hate in our world, and we should very, very vehemently, or whatever, make sure that our kids are safe, no matter what it takes. Thank you very much.
Good evening, board. My name is Jeff Jennings. There's a difference between free speech and free behavior. People often confuse the two. And for a teacher to hold students hostage in a classroom and subject them to their personal views is not only ethically wrong, but it's morally wrong. And if the school board doesn't want to or chooses not to enforce the laws of Florida, then they should resign. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and fellow citizens that are still here. Thank you. My name is Joyce Campana, and I'm here just to voice my opinion that the world is bigger than Lee County. It's bigger than the school district. If it's about children, which that's our business being here, is about children. The flag that's in the classroom saying that there's no place for hate is an issue we should all want to train and give and discuss with our children. Where are parents to discuss the little hearts below, which I find it interesting, we're fixating on those symbols below. They're not even, as far as I know, the official flags of the organization supposedly represented below. So I would stress that to give our children the tools to go out into the world, we talk about honesty, and we talk about no hate and civics. What has happened to that? The world is big.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Michaels, and it's 2024, not 1950. And I'm embarrassed to be from Florida while the governor is calling the state the Freedom State and taking rights away daily. Book and history banning, the flag and word banning, banning even discussing equity. Hate has no place as correct and should be supported. The teacher did nothing to be punished for, and if a flag is indoctrinating, then the American flag is indoctrination too. You going to remove that? I am grateful and thankful that my grandchildren that are school here in Florida are smart enough to understand that all the banning is not in their best educational interest for their future. And by the way, everyone does not believe in the Bible, as is our right, and shouldn't dictate anything that is--
Thank you. Your time is up, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Rachel D. Brown. I live in Lee County, and I value public education. The police who arrested Rosa Parks were enforcing the law. Clearly, the law is not always moral. Thanks to DeSantis's censorship, many children will not learn this in school. When I was a kid, gay was an insult. No one knew what trans was. I only learned about trans people from talking to one in college. And I'm very happy to see that kids these days are much more accepting of each other and have context for words that were once used as insults. Also, I wanted to mention that I saw a news truck out there, and they were out to lunch during our protest of the genocide on Gaza on December 11th. So don't know why that happened. Thank you.
Michael Landosha, Fort Myers. My name is Michael Landosha. I'm a 30-year veteran teacher and a 2024 Golden Apple Teacher of Distinction. Couple of weeks ago, I submitted my letter of resignation, ending my 30-year career. I resigned after entering my classroom that morning and finding that 600 of my books had been removed from my classroom. I realized that I can no longer teach in good conscience. Under current authoritarian conditions, I can no longer be the teacher I've always aspired to be. And I'm not alone. Since then, countless teachers have reached out to me to say they wish they could do the exact same thing that I had done. That does not bode well for this fine district. Please protect your valuable teachers. They cannot live with anger and fear for the things that they may say in class. They cannot police themselves at the level that they are expected. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Attorney DeBree Bruno, and thank you, everyone. I'm going to ask Dr. Bernier or Attorney DeBree Bruno, is there anything you'd like to address regarding public comment tonight?
Yes, sir. Before addressing the majority of the speakers, let me go back and remind ourselves that we had several teachers come up tonight talking about the contractual process and bargaining. I would share that I will make sure that message is carried directly to our bargaining team, and hope that those individuals who made those comments will also make sure that that's carried directly to the union staff, so that when we get involved with our collaborative bargaining, sorry, with our interest-based bargaining, then we can have the same interest on the table at the same time. I hope some of our guidance counselors are still in the room. Thank you for staying. As a former principal, I used to say, the one thing I wasn't really good at was Care Bear. I could wipe the tears, and I could get a student to the point where I could get them to a counselor. And then, as far as I know, miracles happen, because you do amazing work with children each and every day. And to your point about our graduation rate, greater student achievement, increasing school grades, you are a very significant link in our process to ensure children reach their highest personal potentials. And from me, the staff that I represent, and from the school board, it was going to be in my closing comments anyway, but we do wish you a very successful National Counselors Week. And information is coming from me to all of you. I was waiting till midweek to send it. So looking forward to our chance to recognize you through email and all the counselors of our, of our great staff and of our schools. Lastly, I think what I should address in terms of the middle school is we've heard the comment. Now, we've heard it from the NAACP. We have a 10-year strategic plan set out for our capital improvement, and I want to be clear that currently, there is not a middle school plan for either the Dunbar, Dunbar, or now Tice community. We will take with our chief operations officer our construction team. This matter continues to be under advisement, and we will come back to the board if we have the possibility and we can see the programmatic need based upon student population and student growth. Finally, I guess I would like to thank everyone who came this evening. Doesn't matter what group you represent. I think it's very vital in a, in a situation to take in the input from our community. Ensuring the safety and security of our students, our staff, and their learning and working environment is one of our paramount responsibilities. Ensuring that our community environments are safe for our staff members and our students, as well as all of our citizens, is also a high priority. The commitment is the leading reason why the school district of Lee County will not and does not tolerate hate or harassment in our schools. Moreover, we seek to foster accepting and enriching educational environments for all, where our teachers have the flexibility to deliver education while adhering to board policies, Florida standards, and federal guidelines. So I'd like to thank you for the input this evening and your participation, as it contributes to the vital community dialogue, and our, and the knowledge of your positions can help steer our work. Thank you.
Attorney DeBree Bruno, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Given the comments this evening, a lot of that dealing with various laws, I would appreciate the opportunity. The school district of Lee County aims to create a learning environment that nurtures tolerance, promotes understanding, and prepares our students to thrive, as well as provide an environment for teachers in which they can aspire and inspire their students. In that light, members of the public should be aware of board policies, 1362, 2260, and many others that address anti-discrimination, anti-harassment, and anti-bullying in the Lee County School District. These policies are based on equal protection clause of the United States Constitution, multiple federal laws, the Florida Constitution, and Florida Statute 1,001.05, which specifically addresses non-discrimination and the public education system. These laws and policies prohibit discrimination based on race, color, sex, religion, sexual orientation, and other classifications. These policies also align with the district's vision to be a world-class school system and its mission to ensure each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and both teachers and students are safe and secure in their learning environment. Through its policies, the school board has made it abundantly clear that it will not tolerate discrimination in any form. Therefore, the district cannot and will not tolerate hate. Hate truly has no place in any classroom or any part of the Lee County School District. Members of the public should also be aware of Board Policy 5780.01 and Florida Statute 1014.04, the Parents' Bill of Rights. In line with law and policy, the school board recognizes the rights and its obligation to reinforce the fundamental rights of parents to make decisions regarding the upbringing and control of their children. And this board and the school district of Lee County is committed to honoring those rights. I have heard quite a bit this evening about the Individual Freedoms Act, commonly referred to as the Stop Woke Act, which was passed into law in 2022, and prevents the instruction of certain concepts relating to race, color, national origin, and sex. Florida Statute 1,001.42 codifies HB 1557, which prevents instruction of sexual orientation and gender identity in schools. As you can see, the legalities are multiple and very complex. As the school district strives to be a world-class school system and ensures that each student reaches their highest educational potential in a safe and secure environment for students and teachers, it must also abide by all laws. And the school board and district will do just that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Attorney DeBree Bruno. I just want to echo everyone's comments. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I know we had a few bumps in the road, but I really, and I know this board does, really appreciates everyone coming out and letting us know and giving your voice. I can tell you, everyone's voice was heard tonight. Truly appreciate that. Look at how amazing this process. Look at for our student representative up here, how he got to see this process tonight. How amazing was that? For his first time up here, he gets to see this. He gets to see how it works. But that's important, and I'm glad to show that. So thank you. And we're, as I said, we will follow, continue to follow the law in this district, and we'll continue doing our number-one job, which is the education of our students. So at this point, I will give a few minutes if anyone wants to leave before we get, clear out before we get to our next portion. Thank you. Okay, everyone, we're going to move on to approval of action items under the consent agenda. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all the material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or worked out with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business or tabled items portion of the agenda? Ms. Juvenelli.
I have none. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica.
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
I have none. Thanks.
Mr. Persons.
I have none.
Ms. Langford Fleming.
I have none.
Ms. Morgan.
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent items tonight? Okay.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as written.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion moved by Ms. Jordan, seconded by Mr. Persons. Please record your vote. Okay. Motion carries 7-0. Dr. Bernier, please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment and approve another consent agenda.
There's only one individual who was approved this evening as an administrator. He is not in attendance. His name is Matthew Chesser. He will be joining us on the Grants and Program Development Office. He will become the new Director of Grants and Program Development. He was not able to attend this evening, but I think it's worth mentioning that we have a new leader in our Grants and Program Development Division. Thank you.
Okay. Microphone one of these days. Okay, we're going to move on to item R. Go to the order and board comments. I promise that I'll make sure to get to our student representative first. Robert, go ahead, sir.
Make sure this thing is on. It's a pleasure to be able to speak tonight. I had the pleasure of being a student in the Lee County School District since 2019, when I moved to the state as a middle school student. Admittedly, my school experience has been comparatively static compared to some of my peers, as I transitioned from Mariner Middle to Mariner High, a truly extreme distance of all 40 feet. Though little changed as far as scenery, I had the great ability to see the school district and my peers change and grow in response to adversity, as I've observed both the COVID-19 pandemic and Hurricane Ian's respective impact on the school district's goal of trying to educate the county's youth. If there's one thing I've gained, it's a wholehearted respect for the academic environment and the-- the opportunities that have been hard fought for us despite such impediments. In the same vein, that compels my greatest desire for improvement, as I wish more of the incoming freshmen, and especially their middle school counterparts, held the same level of interest and respect for what the school district and the schools themselves have to offer for them. From my personal experience as a student who had to predominantly seek out most forms of after-school involvement, I believe it would be extremely beneficial for each school to tailor a compulsory welcome that introduces new students to the range of opportunities available, from clubs and athletics to career technical education pathways and special electives. I wholeheartedly believe that with increased student awareness comes greater student involvement, which is sure to create a more community-driven environment at each and every one of the district's schools. And in coming here, I had no idea that such contention would be displayed before me and the school board. As a student representative for the meeting, I feel compelled to compel all of those in attendance who have children in the school board to listen and learn from those who have to spend all of their time at school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robert. I'm going to keep it down at that end. Ms. Morgan?
I really have no comments, other than I want to thank Robert for his comment, because we welcome suggestions about those things that we can do to encourage student engagement, particularly start, we talk often about how kids come into high schools and, oh, I'm so.
Thank you, thank you. I was thanking Robert for his comments about student involvement, because we are very concerned that students coming into the high schools are aware of the opportunities that they have. And in fact, we would like them to be aware before they even choose their high schools what opportunities they might have at the different high schools. So, thank you for your input, and I appreciate you being here this evening. And I do appreciate everybody in the public who came and spoke, those who spoke respectfully of one another. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Moving on to Ms. Langford Fleming.
Yes, Robert, this is the second time in a row I've heard a student up here talk about organizations and things after school, extracurriculars, to get buy-in from freshmen to buy into their high school career. So, note taken. Second time in a row, you're going to do great things in life. You should be very proud. Thank you to Gateway for such an amazing music performance. I'm always, I say it every time, but I'm still always amazed at the talent that the Lee County School District has at every single school when they come up here. Public comment was heard. You know, I respect so much people that take the time and opportunity away from family to come up to the district to talk to the board, and we are hearing and we are listening. And while some people, I know tonight was their first night, realize that the board cannot say something, that's just our policy, we don't speak after each comment, so just because we don't comment at that time doesn't mean that we didn't hear you. It did not fall on deaf ears. I'm always incredibly grateful, actually, that Mr. Daniels comes, and I learn something new from him every time, and that is something I would really like to have a conversation with the superintendent about defining that contract of virtual school, just so that I am understanding of what that definition looks like for our virtual school leaders. And I know that that was such a, I was a teacher throughout that time in leaving education, and it was just such a foggy, smoky time, and hopefully we never have to go back there. But thank you for coming up and letting us know that. I have several friends who are school counselors. I worked very closely with school counselors, and when I spoke, or when I taught, excuse me, because I did teach in the ESE departments. You all are just such a wealth of knowledge, not just to the classroom teacher, but also such a great resource between teacher and parent. So, thank you for being that vessel between the two to have those discussions, and I'm grateful for your work, and happy Counselors' Week. I hope you do something fun Friday, whenever the week is over. I think it would be, I think it's important for me to at least comment about the comments that were made about the flag or the bulletin board that was discussed this afternoon. So I had to write something down. We have policies that prohibit political signs and symbols in the classroom. As a board member, it is our duty and job to follow the laws in place. And this poster or bulletin board that displayed symbols, the one part I do agree with is hate has no home here. Hate has no home anywhere. Here, church, home, work, amongst your peers, amongst your friends, inside of a classroom. However, there should not be political symbols of any sort, Republican, Democrat, pro-this, anti-that, pro or anti any political movement. This instance is a perfect example of why we do not allow political symbols, because in my opinion, what it has become is a distraction and takes away from the teaching and the focus on our curriculum. Therefore, if we adhere to the law, if we continue to allow parents to have the final say in what's best for the child, and get back to teaching those basics, then we will be doing what's best for our children. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Persons.
Some wise politician once said, "If both sides are mad at you, you must be doing something right." This is probably the first time we've had an issue where it hasn't been one side very upset with the board and the other side very happy with the board, what we did. This is both sides wanting more from the board, and they're very different. The classroom, as Ms. Langford Fleming said, needs to be a place of neutrality. What happened here tonight shows that this disruption is not neutral. And I just think that for a child to do their maximum learning, which several people had talked about, we just need to remove all these, and they're distractions, is what they are. As Ms. Langford Fleming said, I don't think anyone on this board, I can't speak for everybody, has a problem with no room for hate here. That's not the issue. The issue is there are several symbols on that flag that represent different groups that don't represent every group. You know, and you saw today, one group wants this, one group wants that. You'd have to have a million different flags to be all-inclusive, unless you just had one flag, which is the United States flag. So, that's where I stand on that.
Robert, thank you. You did great. Thank you, Mom, out there. I'm sure she was worried about her son a little bit, so thank you for hanging in there with all of us. And that's all I have to say. Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. Robert, I just want to thank you as well for being here. I have seen you from the beginning of the student advisory to this point right now, which I've seen you've grown to be an officer as well for the student advisory. And again, speaking on behalf of other students, I really appreciate that, as Ms. Langford Fleming mentioned, and Ms. Morgan mentioned as well, because that's really vitally important to us, to make sure that we have students like you out there with the other, bringing us information. So I do appreciate that. And Mr. Daniels, thank you. I wrote that down, and the minute you said that, I was like, "Virtual, virtual. Why do we keep coming to virtual?" So I really believe that we need to, and I know Dr. Bernier mentioned that, so that he'll be looking into that, and I appreciate that, because I had no knowledge of that. So that was something that I made sure I took note on that. Thank you to our counselors as well. We really appreciate everything that you do. We need you out there. And I know we keep hearing about the middle school, and I know that Dr. Bernier mentioned something regarding that as well, and looking at numbers to see where we're at on that, and where, that it's not, the plan is already made for the 10-year plan, but keeping in mind that we hear that you're, what you're saying there. And just thanking everybody for being here, and even though we may disagree sometimes on things, it is really important for you all to come and share your point of views. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica.
Ms. Chia, is that your name? Okay, good. Thank you for being here. I know that every time we have a student who comes here, it just, to me, it's so refreshing, because it reminds me why I sit here and why I do what I do. And you were just so incredibly well-spoken and convicted. You know, you knew what you wanted to say, and you knew what message you wanted us to receive, and I received it, and I'm just grateful you were here. So thank you. Also, I will never walk out into the boardroom again without giving water to our SROs. I learned that from you tonight. I never even thought about that. I come and I have my drink, and I never think to give them one. So you taught me something new, and I appreciate that. I'm a little, Barbie as a school counselor. I don't know your name or your school, because I didn't write it down, but I'm going to get that information from staff and take you up on your offer to come out and see you and see what you do. I think I have a sense of what you do, but I don't know for sure what you do. So I appreciate the invitation, and I will be out. And I'm sorry to call you Barbie, but that's what your T-shirt says. And then, you know, in terms of the feedback that we got tonight from the public, I'm a little torn as to what I can say, what I should or shouldn't say. I will say that hate has no home here. Hopefully, it is obvious to everyone, but I didn't have that sense listening to the public comment tonight. I had the sense that there is quite a bit of hate out there, and I feel badly that our students and our staff feel targeted by that. I feel embarrassed to be associated with a party that makes "hate has no home here" the sword that they want to fall on. I mean, that makes no sense to me. And also, the symbols on that flag are not a distraction. They are not taking away from the learning environment. They represent real people who have real struggles, who are really bullied, and who are really marginalized by people who pound the Bible and say what you do is wrong. So I'm just, I'm just kind of torn as to what I can and what I can't say. I will say that I'm, I think I'm just going to leave it at that. I hope that, I hope that our teachers, our staff, and our students feel supported by the leadership in this district, despite some of the hate that was on parade here tonight. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Thank you. Real quick, a quick reminder, we used to have a middle school in the East Zone. It used to be Lee Middle, which is now James Stevens. So I went to Lee Middle, so we had one in the East Zone, and it was a great school when I went there. I want to bring up a couple things. StimTastics is this weekend, and the Junior Parade is Sunday. StimTastics is on Saturday at the Colusa Sound. And then the following weekend, Saturday night, is the Grand Parade. I hope everyone would attend. It's free to everyone. I want to bring up that I believe that we're all Americans, and we all have constitutional rights, and all those rights are going to be protected by this school board, to include parents' rights. Our classrooms should be a neutral space where knowledge is imparted, critical thinking is nurtured, and personal growth is encouraged. However, the introduction of political posters may inadvertently divide us and limit the open exchange of ideas. When one side is offended, then you lost the neutrality and made it political for the one side. We must strike a balance between addressing bullying and maintaining a neutral classroom environment that encourages open-mindedness and critical thinking without undermining anyone's rights, to include a parent's rights. As we educate minors, we must respect the law. We must understand that someone might be offended by another statement, and that becomes one-sided, and we are not garnering another idea that might be different from that statement. We limit another viewpoint to only push one idea, then we limited the ability for real discussion. I just think that we have to come together as Americans, and, because we are Americans, and we need to be kind to everyone. We can be anything in this world, one thing, let's just be kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert, thanks for being up here. You had a heck of a night, I'm sure, so I'm glad you got to see this process. But thank you, and thank you for what you do. Gateway High School, great job before. I also want to thank our administration and Chief Newland, and for running an orderly and smooth night. Really appreciate that. Means a lot to me. Me personally, I'm going to echo what Ms. Langford Fleming and what Mr. Persons said. So to me, schools are sacred ground, and it's important we are content and viewpoint neutral with that. That's why I want to make sure that our number-one job is focusing on the education of our kids. So I want to reemphasize that personally. I think that's really something that's just kind of getting lost in some of these conversations. So I respect everyone, and I agree. Hate has no home here. I don't think anybody disagrees with that, so. But I want to make sure we're doing the right thing and making sure we're focusing on educating our students. So I've spoken enough tonight, I think, so I will move on next to Attorney DeBree Bruno.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no comments.
Dr. Bernier?
Just a couple, sir, and members of the board. First of all, Robert, I remember when I first met you in student advisory. He's gone. So I'll let him, I'll let him hear about this anyway. I remember when I first met him in student advisory, and when he was elected to a position, how excited I was to see a different type of person than I had seen previously in the environment. He raises very important issues for all of us, and as a board, as we take a look examination, and as our principals take an examination of what is referred to oftentimes as the make-or-break year, that freshman year, how important it is, that entrance plan for incoming eighth graders to ninth grade, that they have that connection, and somehow we make the bigness smaller. I know that my deputy superintendent and CAO took copious notes, because they've been working on this project for over a year, and it's one of the reasons why our grad rates are improving. Another big factor with our grad rates improving is the work of guidance counselors, staff, teachers, licensed mental health professionals, food service workers, bus drivers, anybody that interacts with a child and helps them continue towards the goal of graduating. So thank you, Robert, for your comments today. They have not fallen on deaf ears, and I'm glad they reinforce the work that was already underway in the school district. To Gateway High School, thank you. It's always amazing. I'm just going to credit for an opportunity. I love to hear choral programs sing, but I so enjoy the fact when there is a balance of voice in a chorus. When you have both the female voice and the male voice, it just makes for a richer experience with a piece of music. Well, not finally, National School Counselors' Week, I've said it already, but again, a reminder to all of our counselors how vital they are to all of us. One note of February 21st and 22nd, I hope that it's on board members' calendars. If it's not, we'll make sure that it's there. The state will be convening here in the Colusa Hatchie Room, and when I mean the state, all of the counties will be represented here in the Colusa Hatchie Room, discussing the Bureau of School Improvement process, and Lee County has been highlighting because of our ability to remove our three schools from the BSI list. Lastly, I want to thank everyone here tonight for their information. All the individuals on this dais believe that hate has no place in our country, our state, community, and especially in our schools. Tolerance is of value we must all uphold. Thank you for your input and participation, and thank you for contributing to vital, thank you for contributing to the vital community dialogue that will be necessary as we continue to support our students, teachers, parents, and greater community. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Chair?
Through the chair, may I ask the superintendent something?
Yes, of course, sorry.
Do you mind reading that about Robert again, since he's sitting out there? I think he would really need to see.
I don't know that I can read it. It was just a couple of quick.
Off your, yeah.
Robert, I just wanted to, before you step back to go home, because you deserve to go home at some point, I clearly understand it. We discussed at one of the recesses, do you have a curfew? And you said, "I don't think tonight I do." I remember you coming to student advisory, and I remember the process of you getting elected to a position, and I think what amazed me was how honored you were that your fellow students would see that leadership in you. I don't know that often you would raise your hand and volunteer for something like that, and you may have experienced a little bit of voluntold, but you accepted the position, you accepted the responsibility. you accepted the responsibility. I've watched you flourish in that environment. Thank you for continuing to bring to our attention the importance of a freshman year transition. It's something our staff has already been working on. It's something that your high school principals and all the staff in the high school are working on because it's where we lose our children. If we don't make a successful transition into a freshman year, the situation grows worse. So, thank you for being a voice of the student and reminding us again of the work that we're supposed to be doing, and happy to report, in many cases, both my deputy superintendent, my CAO, and all those individuals at the school base are already on that issue, making sure that we have a comprehensive way to welcome our freshmen and align them into a place to make the big campus seem smaller. So, thank you for your support. Appreciate you.
We good? Just double-checking, so. Next scheduled meeting of the board is Wednesday, February 21st. There will be a school board workshop at 12:00 p.m., followed by a school board briefing at 2:30 p.m., followed by a school board action meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 8:28 p.m. Have a good evening.